...and storage of empty toter carts. Toter carts are the bins that may be rolled by hand to and from the curbside for yard waste, recycling, or garbage collection. All activities would occur inside the building and no new facilities or other improvements have been proposed by Recology. So this photo shows the, what I'm calling a single building, which is actually two buildings that are, that are abutting each other at the rear of the site and that will show up on the site plan in a minute. So the use is to support Recology's existing operations located to the north at Tunnel Avenue and Beatty Avenue. That's the site plan there. By way of background, last summer, City Council adopted a general plan amendment which re-designated the site from the Baylands subarea to Beatty Heavy Commercial Subarea. While the zoning of this site has not yet been changed to conform with that amended general plan, those boundaries, the zoning ordinance also allows for public utilities in all zoning districts subject to a use permit. The site is the location of the former Van Arsdale Harris Lumber Company, their lumberyard, which was built atop the former municipal landfill. It includes three large warehouse buildings. The easternmost open-ended or shed-style warehouse is, that was used to store lumber, would be used for this use and essentially on the, on the highlighter there is, is the use behind there. The area, this area of Brisbane is industrial in nature, is bordered by Sierra Point Lumber to the south, shuttle bus and rental car parking and staging to the north, and soil and rock recycling operations to the east. The western edge of the site is fronted by Tunnel Avenue and the Caltrain rail lines are located across the street. In terms of the use, Recology proposes to utilize the rear warehouse for cart assembly and storage, as I've mentioned. New cart components would be delivered to the site, assembled and delivered off-site to customers. Empty, old, or damaged carts that have been picked up from customer routes in San Francisco would also be delivered back to the site for loading into debris boxes and delivery to Recology's site to the north for washing and refurbishment. Used carts would be emptied before they would be brought to the site and no cart cleaning would occur onsite. Aside from delivery vehicles, the only other vehicles that were indicated in the applicant's, in the application would be forklifts to load and unload the carts. In terms of staffing, Recology's indicated that up to 12 people would work at the facility and generally this would be split into two shifts with an early morning shift and then an afternoon shift with some overlap in between. They've indicated that the hours would be from four to six, 4:00 AM to 6:00 PM, seven days a week, but they'd like some flexibility on, on an occasion that they might need to go later or earlier. So 24 hours is requested. And vehicle trips are estimated to be up to 80 per day and parking would be in the paved yard on the interior of the site. In addition to planning review, the application was routed to the agencies with authority over water, sewer, the underlying landfill, as well as the various city departments. There were no objections to the use, however, Bay Shore Sanitary District and the county had comments that are reflected on, in the draft conditions of approval. The first was that the sanitary district indicated that a portable toilet would not be permitted for this use per district regulations. And since the applicant received this comment from the sanitary district, they've been in conversation with them already to meet their requirements. San Mateo County Environmental Health also commented on that, that any associated underground utility work would be required to comply with Title 27 landfill post-closure regulations. The county health also provided a recommendation that the site's surface drainage should be improved to prevent water ponding that's now occurring on the site. Both of these conditions are proposed to have 90-day timeframes for completion since this site is already occupied by Recology. Other operational conditions are included in the commission's draft resolution and I won't get into all of those now, but you have those before you. In terms of the findings, there's a couple findings that the, the use must meet and in regards to the first one, the property is located among other uses that are industrial in nature and the proposed use is not anticipated to have any significant impacts on these other uses. The use is similar in nature to the prior lumberyard warehouse use and would be, in that it's storage and it'd be proposed to be entirely inside the warehouse building. And then on the general plan, as I mentioned, City Council adopted that general plan amendment last summer, which allows for Recology uses in this area. On the second finding, the use would not be detrimental or injurious, it would be similar in nature to the surrounding uses. As I mentioned, it would be required to be entirely within the building and would be largely out of public view at the rear of the site. Also, since the carts would be emptied before transport to the site, those used cart staff would not anticipate that there would be odors emanating to the other properties, neighboring properties. The applicant, as I mentioned, estimated that they'd have up to 80 vehicle trips per day, which would include those personal trips by the employee, and staff does not see this as a significant traffic volume. And finally, a few questions were raised by one of the commissioners prior to the meeting and so I'll, I'll try to address those here and the applicant can speak further to those questions during the public hearing. The first had to do with the timing of Recology's use of this site and I understand from Recology that it's been in use since August of 2017, so about a year and a half. And I should note that the enforcement is, is complaint-based and we've received no complaints. Recology voluntarily submitted this application after becoming aware that it was necessary. So the remedy at this point in time is for them to either gain Planning Commission approval of this use permit, or if it's denied, to vacate the use. The next question had to do with the 90-day timing on the couple of conditions of approval that I've mentioned and it was staff's intent in drafting this that in the 90 days was for completion of those couple of conditions, the restroom and the, the surface drainage issue, not 90 days to get approval. So it's a fairly short clock and the applicant may want to talk about that and, and their plans, especially for the restroom is, that might be the one that, well, I'll let them speak to that. A third had to do with the current operations on the site, which the commissioner noted that it did not appear to be contained within that rear building. And I asked the applicant about that and I understand that they had more carts delivered to the site than they had intended and so the applicant, the application reflects what they intended to do, but they may want to speak further on the, the intent with those carts and their disposition and timing. So, so with that, I, staff recommends approval of the, of the use permit via adoption of the draft resolution, which contains the findings and conditions of approval. And if you have any questions, happy to take them.
Thank you, Ken. Commissioner Seisong, questions for staff?
Well, I'm not sure if this is, I should be directing this at the applicant or you, but I guess I can start with you. So, um, so the use has been inactive, you said, since August 2017, so they weren't in compliance. So is there any fines or penalties that the city would issue for something like that?
Had we undertaken code enforcement, there are fines associated with that, but, but as, as I mentioned, the, the city did not issue any citations. Essentially, they came forward with this application and, and so, that, no, there have not and, and we wouldn't be going back retroactively to fine them.
And in terms of, you noted that there was not supposed to be any use outside of the buildings, but that there were toter carts or what was it, something outside of the facilities? So since there already has been a violation and a failure to timely get a use permit, are we going to be monitoring, monitoring the situation more to make sure that they're complying?
It is staff's intent to, yes, to check in on them periodically, just to, at least in this initial phase, so that we're assured that they are complying with the use permit. So yes, that's my intent.
Okay. I have some other questions, but I think I'll address it to the applicants.
Commissioner Gomez?
Yeah, and this also might be to the applicants, but the issue around drainage in that area is, I don't know if you travel down tunnel, but it floods over a lot of that, that stretch from the lumberyard all the way through. And so is that under jurisdiction of the county? You mentioned that that's, it's under review by the County Environmental Health and Safety, I believe. Is that, so that particular scope of work would be, the county ultimately would, would evaluate or we would?
No, that, that would be the city. So essentially, that was just a recommendation by the county, not a requirement.
Okay.
But, but staff's observation was that, yes, there is ponding out there and, and it makes sense to not have that occur and that's, that's a condition that's already occurring.
Okay.
And, and so we have, the condition would be essentially that they provide a, a plan to staff and, and the city engineer would be involved in that review and to handle that.
And just to clarify, we're talking about only the onsite ponding?
Yeah.
You're right, there's a bigger issue with that area and, you know, the city, the road is, it's kind of a complicated issue with the road. It's actually not a dedicated city road, or certain portions of it aren't, but that'll be really more under the city's broader responsibility.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Ken, could you tell me, just to clarify, the other buildings on the site that are located in the front portion, to your knowledge, have those buildings been examined to determine whether or not they're safe?
Not that I know of.
Okay, and I bring it up because they, they look like they're perhaps not safe for habitation, possibly even where they should be condemned.
So if, if the restroom is to be an existing restroom within, say, that front building, which a portion of that, that front building is an office, so that, that would make sense that that's where that restroom would be. It would have to have a building permit attached with that and as part of that, it'd need to make sure that, that it meets current standards and, and so there would be inspections associated with that permit.
Okay. And looking over the applicant's supporting statements, it says there are no water or sewer connections. So is that correct or is, or is that no water or sewer connections to the rear building? So you, you seem to be indicating there is a water connection to the front.
I believe so. But the status of that water connection or sewer connection is not known, so I think this is incumbent on the applicant to verify the condition of whatever is there. If they don't have adequate facilities, they need to provide them.
Okay. And do we know where the closest sewer and water connection are, by any chance?
No, I do not know.
I mean, would it typically be on tunnel? Just, I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
That, that would be what I would imagine and I, I believe the applicant can speak to this. They have a recent building that, that went, this was part of their office to the north of this site where they, they would have connections for that office building.
Okay, because when I look at the rear building, if there is something existing on tunnel, it's about 100 feet to that back building at, at about a minimum.
Right. I, I would not imagine that the restroom needs to be all the way back in that rear building.
Okay, and, but that's assuming the front buildings are deemed suitable for any occupancy or use.
Right.
Okay. And that's not exactly what they're asking for in this permit. They're not asking to use the front two buildings, so that's a little ambiguous.
Right. So the condition of approval, that, so they're asking to use the rear building for the carts. The condition of approval is not trying to limit them to using the rear building for the restroom, but, but somewhere onsite, they need to provide a, a restroom.
Okay. And on the land title survey, I noted on the very back of the property line, there was something running there that says PVC pipe. Do we know what that is? It's in the very, very back of the property.
Are you talking about this figure?
Yes. Very back, it's a diagonal line, it's the easternmost line there.
Somewhere back in there.
If you get in the detail, the easternmost line that runs from top to bottom says PVC pipe.
I'm, I'm not aware of what that, that is. This, this is a survey that they attached just for reference. It's not really intended for construction or anything like that.
Okay, and then I also noted on the front of the property to the north of the front building, there is, says gas tank. And I don't know, do we know if that's an underground tank or a surface tank? Any idea?
I defer to the applicant on that one.
Okay. Again, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I didn't know if you knew. I noticed the PG&E connection is on the southwestern portion of the property, close to tunnel. And a question on, I, I tried to look at any kind of drainage and I noted there was something that I cannot decipher. On the north side of the property line, there are two of them that say drainage something, two of them. Do we know what those are?
I do not.
Okay. And if in fact, dealing with the standing water issue, by Brisbane code, would water have to be channeled through sewer lines on the Baylands for runoff?
No, so.
Or ponding water?
So they, they would direct it onto essentially areas that, that are more like swales.
Okay. And just a clarification as well, the easternmost portion of the back building there, the, the one that's proposed for use, there's a notation that the alphatic, if I'm saying that correctly, concrete transitions to natural ground in the area. Exact transition is not, I can't read the next word. So in the back, it looks like there are various concrete pads that are quite small in nature, but that the entire back area is unpaved, is that correct?
I understand it to be most of the back area, but the, and I actually was asking the applicant for this information, so that's why you have this plan in front of you, is, is the back area behind that building is, is largely unpaved, but the front area is paved. And so they're not, the, the use would not be in the back area and there wouldn't be parking in the back area.
Okay.
So, so that would not, so this use would not affect any of that back area of the site.
Okay, and on the, one of the photographs, this would be G 1.13. It shows the southernmost boundary and Estes Avenue. Is that actually a street identifiable on Brisbane maps? Does that exist? Because that would be, the way it's shown on this photograph, looks like it, it goes all the way to the back of the property.
That is, I believe, either a paper street or a driveway. It's not really a, a street per se.
Okay. And then on the, also on the northwesternmost corner of the property line near the gas tank is something that's indicated as valley gutter. Do we know what that is by chance?
I'm sorry, we, can you repeat that?
Valley, V-A-L-L-E-Y gutter, G-U-T-T-E-R.
I'm sorry, where are you looking at?
It's on the very northwesternmost portion. There's a little, there's a little rectangle, which is the gas tank, and then just to the left of it is what looks like a, a little rectangular curved box. Says valley gutter.
I'm not sure what that, that is. So this, this map, again, is just a reference. It includes information that's really beyond this application. It, it was provided just to give a sense of the buildings and, and also where the asphalt was versus where the asphalt was not. And so there are, there are items that are historical in nature on this site that, that are just not related to the use.
Okay. And then noting also from photographs that are provided on G 1.20, Building 3, South and East facades, I note in the photograph what appears to be one or two debris boxes, which apparently are for what they're talking about, storing outdoor collected used toters that have been emptied. And also, it looks like there are toters stored outside that building. So I, I'm, I'm just bringing it, bringing it up because we're being told that these will all be stored, all the processing will be done indoors, but we have at least one, potentially two debris boxes outside, and we have toters in the photograph that are already being stored outside. So.
Right. So, so that, yes, this, this again is something that they need to correct and comply with.
Right. Okay. I visited the site, I personally saw toters being stored in the middle building as well. I, I have some concerns about the findings on not being a problem with neighbors, noting the, there's 30 feet from that back building to Sierra Point Lumber. And if you're storing, even if they're emptied used toters, if you've ever been near Recology in the summer, or in any neighborhood with empty used toters, they are odoriferous and collecting debris boxes full of them, I'm not certain Sierra Point, now Golden State Lumber will be very happy about that. So I'm not sure that I agree with the finding about it not being a problem with neighboring businesses in that regard. So those are my points, questions, thank you very much. At this point, we'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here, would like to speak? If you could step to the podium and identify yourself, please.
Tim Coffield, project manager for Recology.
Hi, Christine Borghay, environmental planner with Recology.
Maurice Quillan, manager for Recology San Francisco. And I think what we'll do is we'll all introduce ourselves and then we'll all be up here to answer various questions because between all four of us, I think we can answer each and every one of your questions. Tim with the detailed information, Christine with the application, myself with the general planning, and then to my right, this last to be introduced.
Hi, Dan Negron, the general manager for Sunset Scavenger.
Thank you for being here. Is there anything that you would like to present to us, just based on our comments that you've heard?
I think that the staff report is, is accurate based upon what we're trying to accomplish at the site and I, I think what would be most important for us this evening is to just specifically address your concerns about the use and the buildings and drainage, things of that nature, and that's why Tim and Christine are here and Dan for the operation.
Okay. Commissioner Seisong, you want to start? You said you had some questions for the applicant.
Yeah, okay, so let's see. So in terms of the restroom facilities that aren't currently up to code, what's the situation right now and, you know?
So we've talked with Bay Shore Sanitary District and we were addressed a couple of options. So right now, we don't plan to use any existing utilities because all the existing infrastructure on this lot is fairly worse for wear. What we've looked at is going above grade with a sewage ejector and grinder that we would pump to the low, the local location where the existing bathroom is tied into. That, we do have a, we have surveyed the site to find the utilities, but the utilities, again, they're all at the front southwest corner and they're all, again, not in the greatest condition. So we have looked at that and the bathrooms themselves, we looked, looked at a couple of options of either being a prefabricated unit that could be set above grade, that we would use the ejector with. We've also looked at kind of a higher-end permanent structure, similar to what you see in a national park or something like that where they have the prefabricated, but they're more solid and permanent. And we've also looked at whether there'd be an option of using kind of a prefabricated unit that had a service to it, so that it'd be more of a septic type system that you would suck out. So those are three options that we looked at. We're deciding, based off of availability, time, and cost, on what would be the most efficient and quickest, and we're in the process of that now. When we get that, we'll present that to Bay Shore Sanitary. But there's nothing set in stone at this point because this is fairly, fairly new request from Bay Shore Sanitary.
May I ask then where you're considering locating these structures?
Probably behind the, at the northern part of the lot, behind the second building. So we don't plan to put these inside the building. Be on the outside, close to where the workers are.
Okay.
We need to look at the best location for this based off of the existing site because the existing site is not in the best condition, that's why we have ponding. But the northern site is the highest elevation and it does have a natural grade to the question you had earlier of where that swell was, or that, that's an actual existing swell that surface drains to a, a gutter at the very front of the lot. So we'd probably position at a higher elevation. But that's to be determined as well based on the, the system we choose.
Okay. So right now, the conditions of your facilities, there's no issue with, you know, I don't know, is it sanitary? Is it, I mean, is there flooding issues with it? I mean, obviously, it's not up to code right now.
We do have flooding, but in select locations, but none in the back where we actually work. It's mainly at the, behind the first existing building, right off of the street. And that, we walked with San Mateo County Health and it was a recommendation that we look into how we would address that and we're, we're, we're in the process of kind of, we do have a topography on the site, we do have a site survey of the site. It's coming up with a plan with an engineer of how we would address it.
I'm just concerned.
All the building up, we wouldn't dig down. It's, we, we'd level out the existing asphalt that's there. And the notes that are on this older map where they say there's asphaltic moved to non-asphalctic, it's basically what they had done in the past before we were even there or owned it, was they covered the areas with gravel. So the site is fully asphalted, it's just, if you walk the site and actually see where the dips were, they built those up over time. And where they're, where we get the pond is where they didn't build up over time, where it settled over time.
And you say you have, was it 12 workers that will be there in, in shifts?
Yes.
So is there like a?
Operation.
So is there like a supervisor on the site that's going to make sure that everything is supposed to be done the way it's, you know, for example, like the bins won't be outside and this and that?
Absolutely, yeah. We, we, once I read the permit process and the importance that you're placing on this, we're definitely going to commit to no toters outside, I'm going to minimize the debris boxes, and they're only there strictly to just transport what comes from the field. And we're at the point now where we, we can triage these containers within three days and they're back getting washed at our 505 facility, Tunnel and Beatty. If there was, if, if, if it's a big concern, we can probably continue having the conversation about possibly washing there. I'd have to look at what the cost. I'd have to look at what the cost would be, the capital costs and the, and the amount of people that would need. But right now, I need the debris boxes just to triage them and get them out of there and back over to tunnel. Also, the challenging part is we're dealing with contractors, so I'm dealing with a contractor and we have union employees at five oh five, so I can't, I can't necessarily mix the two, so I have to keep the two separate as an operational division. So, but yeah, in the ninety days, all the toters will be inside. And to your question about the second building, we'll get that cleaned out as well. So we'll just be working out of the third building and all inside. That's our commitment, that's the requirement.
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Gomez?
Well, I had questions about the adequate draining and it seems like that's early stage and is going to require some, some, you know, engineering and landscape, you know, design. You know, my reading of this is that we have our concerns and it appears that they're going to address them once we've actually given them the use permit. That's kind of how I'm reading this.
Did you have any further questions?
I didn't have any further, any further questions at this time.
Okay, I, I have a question. The the land title survey indicates this as Van Arsdale Harris Lumber. I, I assume you purchased the property, Recology has, could you tell us when? Because this land title survey is dated twenty thirteen.
I, I believe we purchased the property in two thousand and thirteen or fourteen, I'm not quite sure of the exact purchase date. But we, we have, we have Recology Properties, which is the company that owns all of our properties, did purchase it from Van Arsdale Harris.
Okay, and. And I, and I would like an unequivocal statement, this building in the back, do you have any water, standing water in that building?
We do not have any standing water in the building in the back.
Okay, because I'm looking at photograph that was included of Building Three, South and East Facades, and the water is pooling right up to the side of the structure. So when you talk about leveling out for pooling water, that's going to be a tough commodity when it's right next to the building itself.
Can you put that photo up?
It's G point one two oh, right?
G, G one point two oh. The top photograph, Building Three, South and East Facades. And that's a sunny day where probably things have had some time to dry out. And there's a good sized puddle that's touching the side of the building.
That is the middle building. This, the one, the, the Building Three, South to the east, it's not the large, the two buildings in the back of the facility that we're contemplating using for the toter storage.
Okay, so this is where you're storing them in that, in or around that building, but you are not going to be using that building?
Yes. The reason that we acquired these toters is we, we're doing a rollout of containers right now for our customers. And the manufacturer, they run these toters in lots and apparently they over, overbuilt the containers, shipped us more containers than what we had allocated. And then we took them, we're now in the process of rolling them out. Once the containers are out to the customers, we're not going to need as much space. The plan for that rollout should be terminating in July. So we, every day, we're putting literally hundreds of carts out on the street.
Okay.
These are all going away daily.
So I, I'm, from what you said, am I to understand that the used toters are being brought to five ninety-five tunnel because five oh five tunnel has union employees?
No, we're, we're having, we're essentially getting new toters delivered to the facility
Right.
that are being delivered to our customers.
Right.
And the old toters are being emptied and brought back to this facility and then rotated back into our washing and then brought back into service.
Okay, so I guess what I don't understand is why used toters, even if they're empty, are being brought to five ninety-five tunnel and then taken to five oh five tunnel and then brought back to five ninety-five? Why wouldn't they go to five oh five tunnel to begin with?
That's a very good question and it's, it's a labor component, it's part of our collective bargaining agreement. It's, it's just, we can't get the contractor to deliver it directly to our property. Because they're, they're, the manufacturer's dealing with the toters directly and, and it's, it's an agreement we have with the local union, Local three fifty, that the, the start and stop of the contract, we're doing the work out in the field, starts and stops at Van Arsdale. And then we will transport them, our union employees will transport them over to the Tunnel and Beatty facility for washing. They won't deliver them directly.
Okay, because it's really a close proximity, I guess I don't understand why. It seems.
Essentially, we, we purchased the toters delivered.
Right.
That's how we buy them. And what that really means is we're paying to have the manufacturer put them in front of the house. The problem is, there's many steps that have to happen in the middle of delivery. They have to come from the, the molding facility to the facility, the wheels and lids have to be put on in order to be delivered. And that's all considered the work of the vendor. And because of our collective bargaining situation, we're not allowed to do that type of work with a contractor on our site. And the fact that this is off sites, geographically prox, you know, it's not geographically proximate to our facility. It's not jurisdictionally controlled by the union, so we're allowed to do this activity. So to Mr. Negron's point, the minute that the carts are, leave that site and come back, that's considered the completion of that contract. Then our employees can come take the empty carts and bring them back. And that's jurisdictionally what falls under the work of the teamsters because the teamsters are currently engaged in the process of swapping out carts from the customers, customary practice. It's a very complicated convention, but these are the things that we, we do to sort of maintain our, our labor peace.
Okay, so the employee parking there, according to this title survey, there is parking in front of the westernmost front building bordering along tunnel. Will the employees be using any of that parking? It, it's right in front, it, it parallel to tunnel in front of the, the westernmost, which is the front building. It indicates that's all parking, it shows a curb as well.
Yeah, so that's the city of Brisbane, Eastman, and all of the cars that are parked there are actually employees of Sierra Point Lumber.
Okay. So your employees would be parking where, could you clarify?
Behind our fence line on our property.
Okay, and, and next to what building? In the back?
They're parking in the back of the facility right now.
In the area that is not quite paved?
Well, it's paved, it's just covered with gravel.
Okay. Okay.
We don't, a lot of the employees commute, they come together because in, they're in one truck. So that we rarely ever have more than two, maybe three vehicles.
Okay. And you are aware that next door is a car rental company that transports vehicles several times a day? Because I, I've seen them transport. There's a lot of cars that come out all at once.
And a bus company as well.
Right, okay, very good. And have you given any thought to what I brought up about debris boxes in the proximity to Golden State Lumber? And potential offensive odors? Do you have another location you could put those debris boxes?
With time, over the next ninety days, we're going to have a concerted effort to remove all the debris boxes. And so you may see just three or four debris boxes used specifically, logistically just to move the containers back over to Tunnel and Beatty.
But you indicated that would not be done every day, that's every three days approximately?
Yes, up to three days. We could do it every day, but it just depends on, it's every day we roll out a different quantity. So sometimes we get back fifty toters in one day, sometimes we get back two hundred toters. It just depends on what the requirements are.
Of course, right, and what, what they bring back, which could vary, understood.
Yeah, so we just need a little bit of buffer, just capacity wise to get them in the containers and out.
Okay, I don't have any further questions, anyone else? No? Okay, yes.
One quick question, I'd like to address some of the comments you made earlier about the safety of the buildings in the front. And, you know, Recology's open to assessing the, the safety of those buildings and pursuing demolition if it's deemed fit. It's not really something that, you know, we want to have unsafe buildings around, we know they're a bit of an eyesore and also present a safety concern for us as well. So that's something that we'd be willing to look at.
Okay, thank you. Any member of the public like to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, commissioners, discussion, who would like to start?
Yeah, okay, well, I mean, obviously, I have concerns, but it seems like they're trying to work out all the kinks and, you know, be in compliance. So I'm, you know, inclined to approve it, but I, I'd, I'd want some, like, to, to keep a kind of a close eye on this, to make sure that, you know, the toters are not outside and, you know, things are happening and, you know, progressing, so. So staff, you said you would monitor it, like, like how often are we thinking or?
I, I think initially, I, I could probably get out the, well, you know, it's, if the commission has a timeframe in mind, but to me, it, it strikes me that every couple of weeks or so initially to just take a quick drive by and see how it's looking.
Okay, I think, well, if that works for me, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, well, we brought up concerns about adequate site drainage, about worker safety, about sanitation, about odors. I mean, a lot of valid concerns, I guess, yeah, it's like kind of what, you know, what, what process would we envision to ensure that the good faith efforts that you have all communicated to us will be, you know, will be realized. And, and I think it's just, it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we're having that conversation in a thoughtful manner. So if that's what you recommend as a best practice, I defer to staff on how they would approach something like this, to be quite honest. So I guess if that's your best judgment, then I think that's.
So, so if I'm not seeing action happen in the right direction and timeframe, I would start with a warning, essentially a heads up to them that, hey, we need to, need to look after this. And then from that, if we're still not seeing that action, then it gets into code enforcement. Ultimately, the, the permit could be revoked if, by the planning commission, but we don't want to end up there. We'd rather, you know, I, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay, I think, yeah, every three weeks until, what, they have ninety days to comply, so as long as we're seeing progress.
Okay, I, I just would like to review a little bit. We have a, a building site that's been in use since August twenty seventeen, totally out of compliance. Number one. We have a request to use the building in the rear of the property, but we've been using the middle building all along. We have employees working with a port-alet since August twenty seventeen. We have standing water that somehow the rear area needs to have some work done. I don't know how or when that's going to happen while you're using the facility with up to eighty trips a day. And something has to be done with that in the process. We have an unresolved restroom. How that's going to be solved with no firm proposal on how you're going to deal with it. So we're dealing with all these what if, what if, what if, what ifs, and you've been out of compliance since August twenty seventeen. I'd like to actually see you come back with the plan for the restroom and with the pavement and the drainage problems, a, a timeline. Because what I see here is, given ninety days, I don't see how you can resolve it, I honestly don't. You've got rain, you've got Title twenty seven closure issues. I don't see you doing this in ninety days, which means the employees who are, you know, Recology is a really important service and you've got some great employees and they work under some difficult conditions. They're really good employees. And they're going to go for, what, ninety days, six months, a year? Still dealing with a port-alet. If you had a brand new building or an existing commercial building and you got a permit, you would not be allowed to open with a port-alet. You couldn't say, well, our bathroom's not operating yet, but we have this port-alet outside and in ninety days we'll have it working. So I'm inclined to deny it because I, I don't see this happening in the timeline. And I think staff is being optimistic and I appreciate that. And the fact that you came forward and you actually have voluntarily said, okay, you know, we need a permit to do this, but there's some things that bother me about this. And I, I still, I, I, I can't imagine Golden State Lumber not being bothered by debris boxes full of stinky toters. That's what's going to amount to in the hottest weather, it's very, very warm out there. I wouldn't want those next to my property and you're thirty feet away. So I'd like to see some resolution to that. And, and not just emptying them once a day, but locating them somewhere else, so as to not be a nuisance. The north side of the property is, as you know, the car rentals and the shuttles. And I don't think it would be a problem to anyone on the north side, but the south side, I, I think you're going to be a problem to the neighbors. So what I see are a whole lot of unresolved things. I'd like to see you come back with something where it's all buttoned up for us and then ask for the permit.
Well, so it states here that you routed this proposal to all the different agencies. So I'm kind of curious as to why they agreed to approve this and giving, and, you know, giving the applicant the ninety days to fix it. Like what was their rationale for thinking this would be an okay situation, you know, and, and that this could be resolved within ninety days?
So the, the ninety days is, is coming from, from the city. The water ponding issue was a, as I mentioned, a recommendation from the county to address existing conditions, really. They, they didn't provide any more detail than that, but I imagine pond, water ponding issues can, can breed mosquitoes and that's the one thing that comes to mind for me. And so that's an existing condition already, so. So I, I don't know that the use itself is tied to that, but it's something to address. The restroom issue is something that they need to take action on, but in terms of a, a timing on that, we could check back with the sanitary district. It sounds like they've already been in conversation for getting those bathrooms in place pretty quickly.
Yeah, I would point out, these kind of conditions are somewhat difficult. I mean, when you see the, sort of the facts that are here, the, the chair has eloquently laid out in terms of a, a story and a picture of, of, you know, issues that have occurred out there. There is some complexity in, you know, on the part of the applicant, I understand the fact that we are dealing with a pre-existing site that was an operating business for many, many years. Again, and in, I'm sure in their mind, originally they thought we're, they're really not doing much different with those buildings than its historic use. They didn't, you know, necessarily thinking that this would, continuation of a use would trigger a great deal of improvement to a site as compared to changing a use or adding new facilities or new operations, so, you know, I, I don't want to, I, I, I think I can sort of sympathize with where the applicant started. I don't think their intentions were necessarily, they were not ill intended here, I think they thought they had a property that had a certain land use suite of, you know, historic use of warehousing and, you know. In hindsight, we all could have communicated a little better earlier on, so we all understood this. And then the idea that somehow we're not totally redeveloping this site, so the idea that bringing it up to full code to today's standards isn't really where we're at. And in terms of the timeline or whether it's realistic or not realistic, you know, I think to some extent, we're going to have to, if, if the applicant doesn't think it's doable, I would suspect it would be their opportunity now to either ask for more time if the commission's going to grant that, or I don't think they want to be in a position where they're, they're, it's a time limit that's been imposing them that they don't think they can meet because then they'll be, get out of compliance again, so you might want to ask them more directly in terms of their ability and their confidence in meeting the kind of timeframe that's been laid, laid out here. their ability and their confidence in meeting the kind of timeframe that's been laid, laid out here.
I also have a, another concern regarding liability. So, now that the city is aware that they're not in compliance, if there are any issues or injuries on the property?
The city is not liable for, for private activity on private property.
So, even if we allow a use permit when we know certain, you know, can, that they're not up to code, I mean, that's, we, the city still wouldn't be liable for that?
Correct.
And, if I may ask, the, and apologies for not understanding the, the overlap of jurisdictional authority. So, the Bay Shore Sanitary District is the authority for water and sewer utilities?
For sewer.
Sewer.
Um, for this, for the Baylands area.
The Baylands area, okay. So, they're, they're like a key, um, they're a key partner in all of this, right? So, because.
Along with Regional Water Quality Control Board.
Yes, right. So, I hear you loud and clear on the concerns around, um, odors and worker safety, and the, the sanitation kind of, and the drainage issues are kind of the two things that, that just stand out for me. It seems, my reading of this, is that the right authorities have been involved, and that's what you're, that's what you're telling us. I guess what we're struggling with is a ninety-day timeline, or ninety, yeah, ninety-day timeline. Can you execute on that timeline? And we have some trepidation there, but that's.
I, I don't think it's possible for them to tell us yet, because as the scenario where they talked about three potential bathrooms, a structure, a standalone, using the front building, there's a lot of different possibilities. If you use the front building, is it safe? Do you have to remodel? Do you have to reinforce it? Is it seismically safe? If you put something in between the second and third building, you're building a building, you have to get a contractor, you have to put a line in. Is it above ground? Title twenty-seven closure issues. This is where I'm thinking ninety days is, is really ambitious. Because this, this isn't just Brisbane signing off. This is Regional Water Quality Control and the Sanitary District.
Right.
Correct?
Actually, not the Regional Water Quality Control Board. They, so, the, the county has, is the lead agency for the landfill. So, they would be involved with the Title twenty-seven issue.
Right, thank you.
Who would notify the Regional Water Ward. Um, so, they're, they're aware of it. They really had no comments. But we will loop them in, and I don't expect any comments back from them, but yes, the.
Right.
The county would be involved.
And at this point, they, they don't have a lot they can comment on, because they don't know what's going to transpire yet. They've not been given a concrete proposal on the bathroom issue.
And I.
Well, I think, just to interject, I think the applicants, so the two issues, let's tease them apart. I think what I'm hearing from the applicant is they are preparing solutions to deal with the sanitation that are above-ground solutions, that would avoid getting into Title twenty-seven and capping issues. So, if they're successful in that particular endeavor, that there's a mechanical solution that's above-ground, doesn't create penetrations, then the regional, or not the Regional Board, County Health is primarily, you know, the ponding issue is primarily, you know, there may be some nuisance of mosquito and whatnot, but they're really trying to avoid ponding of water and it's leaching into the closed landfill. So, they're looking at a solution that's basically avoiding the ponding, and the water to sheet-flow off to its natural drainage patterns. I don't consider that to be a, is not a, certainly, we're not talking about a Title twenty-seven engineered cap here. That, that kind of work, and I think that kind of design is not, not, the applicant can correct me, I don't think it's terribly complicated, given that you're talking about spots and areas and just, um, so I think that's probably not a, you know, when I, when I look at a ti- ninety-day timeframe, and I think maybe the weather could be the biggest constraint, obviously, of a wet season that drags on and may, might constrain their ability to, to succeed with that particular component. I, I don't really have an idea about with Bay Shore Sanitary. I honestly don't know what that process or the length of time. But I don't want to, I don't want to over, or paint a picture this as an overly complicated series of activities that need to occur. So, you know, the ninety days, which was a staff judgment, we felt that was unreasonable and not, we don't want to set anybody up to fail. We don't want to mislead the Commission in terms of what's realistic or unrealistic. Um, you know, could that be wrong? Yes, it could be wrong.
Can we just make a, a requirement that we revisit this in ninety days?
I, I, I would just deny, I, I would be more inclined to deny the permit and move to continue it to another meeting when we have something more concrete of a timeline. Because right now, it, it's just, wh- what we're getting is they're using the site, they're not going to stop using the site. Right? And then, we offer a permit approval, and they continue using the site, and we have no idea what the timeline is. And then, it, it's a burden on staff to keep monitoring. Are they not using the front two buildings like they're not supposed to? I, I, I just, I see too many problems in this. I, I don't see as much good faith effort of them trying to do the right thing. And, and I'm not trying to be punitive, as much as I'm very surprised, because knowing that you, you're operating without a permit, I, I, I would have liked to have seen more good faith efforts that you were really trying to do the right thing here. And I, and I'm just seeing so many problems. I'd like to see you come back with something more concrete that, that we can go, "Yes, all right, there may be some variation in the timeline," but right now, it seems really open-ended to me. That's just my opinion, and, and I, I understand what you're saying, staff, but that's just my, my take on it.
Through the Chair, if I could, you know, offer just some, some reaction to that. Often, we find the most effective tool to, to get to a compliant place with an applicant and create a level of accountability are conditions that are imposed by your commission as part of an action, for when it incentivizes the applicant to move forward in a timely way. It provides a path for everybody that's actually a lot more clear than, than an enforcement action, because you're also, puts the city in a very interesting position. If you were to deny this permit, I would have to be having a con, have to have a conversation with the city attorney about the next step in the process would then be to start, uh, either they need to relocate, or the city would need to, you know, they have an illegal use at that point. And not, there's no good faith effort that's been instituted to permit this use. You've now denied it. So, we would be, in a sense, probably forced into a code enforcement action. And I don't know if that's going to really help, at the end of the day, get compliance and get these conditions satisfied and bring this site up to a, a more habitable, usable state in the fastest way possible. So, I just offer that out. I don't, I don't know that a denial of this permit creates any more certainty or timeliness of, of activity. That, that's, that's sort of my, my take on that.
So, something of what you're saying also begs another question. San Francisco has been using toters for, to my knowledge, ten, twenty years. Where were they stored before? So, if you purchased the property in twenty thirteen, you had to have toters before. You had to store them somewhere else. So, now we're being told, "You're using this without a permit. You have to put them here. They had to go somewhere before." So, where were they being stored? Yes, please.
Yeah, so, we, we initiated a new program rollout where we, uh, essentially, throughout the city of San Francisco, took over two hundred thousand customers and changed their carts from their existing cart to the current carts. All the toters that were in circulation had been out, um, in the city of San Francisco, um, since we implemented the program back in the nineties. So, we, we had a, a very, uh, mature program that had decades of, you know, toter usage or other types of carts. And recently, we're in the process of changing out literally everyone's cart in the whole city. It started at late two thousand seventeen. So, prior to two thousand seventeen, the toters that we had were on our Tunnel Beatty property, and they were essentially toters that were just being used to, um, fill our daily orders for customers, for replacements, new customers, and things of that nature. This is a complete new rollout. Once we're done with this rollout, there'll be significantly, um, less carts for us to deal with.
So, you, you always had a supply of new toters for new, ongoing customers, and they break down over time. You had to have replacements. So, as of twenty seventeen, you started this new program?
Started, in, in twenty seventeen, we started a new program. Prior to twenty seventeen, late twenty seventeen, prior to twenty seventeen, we had a, we've been using toters for decades, and.
Right, right, I understand.
You replace anywhere up to a hundred to two hundred toters a day.
But you say you've stored them here since August twenty eighteen. When you started the program in twenty seventeen, where were the toters?
We have another building, which is also located in Brisbane, um, on Beatty, that we use for toters. And the problem is, we don't have enough room in that building, plus the new toters that we're getting for the rollout. What we have on Beatty, or in the warehouse on Beatty, is essentially enough to handle our daily operations. So, this, the toters that are being put here are specific to the rollout.
Thank you.
So, you're still of the.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not convinced.
Through the Chair, again, I also want to, not to interrupt your deliberations, but you also have another option, which can aptly point it out. If you were inclined not to deny it at this particular juncture, but you're interested in seeing what kind of progress recology is able to make in some of these sort of technical solutions, you have the option of continuing this for some period of time, thirty days. And they could report back on what progress they've made on these various solutions or issues in a thirty days, if you're inclined to consider that as an alternative to a denial this evening.
When you say continuing, could you?
Continue the public hearing.
Right, that, that's what I was suggesting.
Okay.
Okay, so, when, so when we continue, so they can go on about their business, and then we can address this later, like, in thirty days?
Yes, we would not. They're, they're still in the pro, a good faith process of trying to legalize their non-conformity, and, and they, they can do their business. But the point would be for them to demonstrate how they're proceeding along with the particular issues you've expressed concern with this evening.
So, through the Chair, if I might add, if, if you do, uh, choose to do that, I'd recommend going to a date-specific. So, so that we have that in mind. Uh, March fourteenth would be essentially a month away.
I, I would be more in favor of that.
Okay.
In that, um, if, if, if I had a business and had to do massive cart ordering and rollout, I would have worried about where I was going to put them before ordering them. So, again, it, it just seems to be poor planning here, and I, I'd like to see good planning going forward. And if we can ensure that by continuing it to another meeting, and, and you come back and tell us your progress and that you're really making good faith efforts, I, I'd be way more receptive to that.
Okay, I agree, yes.
So, we'd want a motion and a second and a vote?
Yes, so I will move that we continue this, uh, hearing, um, in thirty days to March fourteenth, two thousand nineteen.
And I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you come back with some more information for us. Okay. Moving on, we have a workshop this evening. This is a review of the Housing Accountability Act. And these are the requirements for objective design review standards and findings of approval for housing development projects.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the Commission. As you're aware, there's been a lot of activity of legislation related to housing, um, over the last couple of years, and that is continuing as well. It's kind of a moving target right now. But the purpose of tonight's workshop is just to kind of focus on a couple of bills that, um, took effect last year. Some of them have actually been in effect longer, but, you know, some changes to the, the legislation that took effect in twenty eighteen. And that's really what we're concentrating on this evening, and those are the Housing Accountability Act and SB thirty-five, which you've probably both heard of, or heard of both of those. Again, just kind of briefly touch over what the requirements are of those two, two, uh, pieces of legislation. We want to talk briefly about the idea of objective design review standards and findings in the context of, of both the requirements of state law, as well as, you know, what's in our current zoning ordinance. And then, you know, what, what the path forward would be for the city to bring our, our procedures and, and laws into better conformance with, uh, with state law. So, again, the Housing Accountability Act, or HAA, is all required, or I'll refer to it tonight, controls our jurisdiction review and, uh, acts upon development applications for housing development projects. And again, the intent is to limit or curb the capability of local governments to deny, reduce the density, or render infeasible housing development projects. And that's the, the, the purpose of the state legislation. And to effectuate that, there are a few very specific requirements, uh, that I've kind of outlined here and are outlined in more detail, I think, in your, in some of the attachments to the staff report. And basically, I think the one I want to focus on here is that if a housing development complies with objective, um, standards, the city can only reduce or deny, reduce the density or deny the project if, if it would result in a specific adverse impact to public health and safety that can't be mitigated in a different way. And again, by state law, specific adverse effect is, is also defined. And then, the other procedural, uh, sort of part of the HAA requires that with, within sixty days of an application being deemed complete, you know, accepted by the city for processing, the city must provide a, a listing, a full listing of inconsistencies with, with the, um, objective standards in our various codes and regulations.
May I ask you a question?
Sure, and let's, please, let's make this interactive.
You mind if we, if we ask as we go along? Okay, so when you say a, um, identified written public health or safety standards, who would have to make those judgment calls? Would that have to be the county? Would it have to be?
It would be the city.
It would be the city.
The lead agency, yes.
And I'm, I'm trying to think of some examples, because it, it seems like, um, it would have to be very, very clear-cut, so as to not be.
You were, you were absolutely correct, and very, I would say, they're pretty narrowly defined, very specifically defined. It's a pretty high bar to.
Right.
To say that something has a specific adverse effect. Yes, you would have to, the city would be in the position of having to climb a pretty high bar to make that finding.
And then it also, in turn, says policies or conditions as they existed. So, policies. What would policies be?
You mean, on, within the, the inconsistencies?
Yes.
Uh, well, that means just basically where these, you know, it's kind of a catch-all. You could have design review policies.
Okay.
You could have a plan that has certain, uh, objective criteria. You could have objective criteria in, in various kind of programs, policies, ordinances. You could have design, a lot of people, it's terminology that's kind of, um, people use different terms for the same sort of thing, right? You have, you have general, a plan, well, policies, but, you know, design reviews sometimes are, are policies. Sometimes they're standards, sometimes they're, it's, it's wording, but the point is, it has to be something that's adopted by the city.
So, where we're talking about, and, and this is with regard to density, safety standards. And if something's meeting the building code, the only thing I could come up with an example in my mind would be egress problems. Would that be, you have any idea an example of that, just to kind of wrap our brains around this?
Yeah, I think you could probably, I mean, you'd have to have a site, you know, I could see, for example, say you had a very hilly corner site, and you had terrible site distance, and the only place you could put the driveway was, or access to the site was at some location where, where you could not have, you know, safe ingress and egress to the site. And that would be then reliant on the testimony and the findings of the city engineer as a, a certified traffic engineer, that that's the case. So, you'd have to, that'd be the bar, and then there'd have to be another step where, you know, the only way to mitigate that, that risk or hazard is by reducing the density or denying the project. So, if the applicant were to redesign the project, that, that eliminated that risk, that, they would have that latitude and ability.
And would that include fire department standards for evacuation? And would that include fire department standards for evacuation?
I suppose, those aren't, I mean, most of those are baked in with the building code kind of issues and ingress, egress, fire hydrants, et cetera, et cetera. I can't, I can't come up with a situation in my mind that somehow you couldn't provide the fire safety or fire suppression needs on a-
I, I'm actually, I'm not talking about suppression, but in the, because we have a lot of different terrains and evacuation, a high-density building, a lot of people. As you pointed out, perhaps, a driveway or the egress on a road that's very narrow, a lot of people. And, and if in fact, it's difficult to do an evacuation in the event of a fire, would that come into play?
I would think it would be hard, you'd be hard pressed if you have a developed area that's developed with homes or multifamily, and all of a sudden you're picking this one project and saying, no, this project is unsafe because we don't have public access or the ability to. I think you'd be hard pressed to treat that particular site different from a built environment that is also in a similar condition.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, let's see. So, um, so those are some of the basic HAA requirements, and we'll get into some of the question about objective findings in a minute. And then SB thirty-five is the other sort of legislation that was passed recently. And basically what it does, it, it curta, it curtails the city's ability to apply discretionary review to qualifying residential projects that, um, provide a certain fixed number of affordability and, you know, or number of units that are affordable. There are also a number of other criteria that need to be met for a site to be eligible for a, what they call SB thirty-five streamlined review. And part of the process that that involves is that the applicant is responsible for demonstrating that they meet the criteria. And so really, the, the burden of proof is on the applicant to prove it. It's not on the city to disprove that it doesn't qualify, or the city to sort of take a proactive step. All this is on the applicant's sort of, uh, burden to, to prove they're qualified for SB thirty-five criteria. And we can go through some of those if you, if you want to go through them in terms of what they are. Sort of highlighted them in the staff report, and also, um, they are listed in full in the attachment. And again, similar to the HAA, the city is obligated to, if someone does qualify for an SB thirty-five review, the city's obligated to, to provide a, again, a written list of any inconsistencies with, with objective policy standards, et cetera, et cetera. Or the project is deemed consistent with, with those policies. And there's also some issues here with, you know, essentially the, the applicant can use the more liberal. If, if there's a discrepancy between the general plan and the zoning, the applicant has the ability to use the more liberal or, of, of the standards. They're not subject to the, the more restrictive. And, and typically, that's the other way around.
John, where you have in here, it says SB thirty-five severely limits the amount of parking the city may require. Is there a criteria that they use, or is it, you know, how, how's that-
There's a locational criteria, I believe it's, Julia can correct me if I'm wrong. If, if you're within a half mile of a transit stop, you don't have to provide any parking. And if you're outside farther than half a mile, it's, you're, the city can't require more than one space per unit, I believe. So those are the restrictions.
That's right, and as you guys may remember from our ADU ordinance update, almost all of residential zoned Brisbane is within a half mile of a transit stop. So we're, could not impose parking requirements on those sites.
Ninety-eight percent of the sites that might be eligible. So does anybody have any, I mean, I can walk through some of those other standards, you know, related to what is an SB thirty-five eligible site. Things that are excluded are, you know, sites that are contaminated, that have not been remediated. Those are excluded from SB thirty-five eligibility. Sites that have been used for rental housing within a ten-year window prior to redevelopment are excluded. And I think that's to avoid, I was, to get to a displacement kind of concern on a statewide level. Those are kind of the two that strike me, has to be urban area. I think everything in Brisbane would probably qualify as an urban setting. Again, it would be a site-specific sort of analysis that, and then the applicant would have to demonstrate their, their eligibility.
So may I ask if we're talking about SB thirty-five cannot be invoked for hazardous sites? If a site is closed under Title twenty-seven and meets the criteria of regional water quality control or DTSC, does that deem it no longer a hazardous site, or does it continue to carry that designation?
Well, if it's been remediated, um, to a residential standard, then it would be eligible after it's been remediated. Not, not on the, anticipating it will be remediated, then the remediation would have to happen first. So we'll spend a few minutes on objective design standards. And again, by state law, and there's one of the recent changes, um, where they really did, the state did define what is considered an objective standard. And as they're on the screen before you, standards that involve no personal or subjective judgment by an official and are uniformly ver, verifiable by reference to an external and uniform benchmark or criteria available and knowable by both the development applicant and public official prior to submittal. It's quite a, quite a mouthful. But, you know, the city does have a lot of what we'd consider objective standards. Heights, an objective standard, lot coverage, um, some, we have certain requirements for step backs, that if you're in a certain zone, you have to have a certain amount of setback or step back if you go up in building height. Some degree of articulation by a percentage, you know, those are all, anything that somebody could go to the code, understand it, and actually implement it is, is going to meet the test of being, um, objective. Other sort of objective standards that you're quite familiar with would be setbacks, obviously is another well-known objective standard. Although we don't necessarily have those in Brisbane, you have other, um, objective design standards can be architectural in nature too. You can require specific exterior materials, finishes, colors, architectural styles. Those are all, again, something that can be objectively understood by all parties. And then, you know, other standards that are numeric in terms of driveway widths, spacing between driveways, separation from a driveway, from a intersection, things that are, can be, you know, that are identified in, in, in city code and ordinance are all be objective standards that can be imposed. And this isn't terribly legible, um, apologize for that. This is out of Parkside, as you, as you remember, one of the things, the exercises we did with Parkside was to essentially pre-engineer that, those regulations to comply with the HAA standards. So what you'll find there is we do have a number of, of, um, objective design standards that speak to things like articulation, step backs in buildings, or changes in roof planes that are, that are, have some sort of quantitative basis, not a, not a qualitative basis. So anybody could arguably read the Parkside plan, read the design standards within that plan, and come up with a project that, that clearly meets the, the standards therein. It's not left to the planning director's judgment as to something being compatible or incompatible, or the planning commission's judgment as to compatibility. And I think, you know, and I, I spent some time in the staff report highlighting some of our design standards, which, which we believe might be somewhat problematic in the context of, of, um, objectivity. And here, you know, I just picked a few just to highlight for, for the commission's consideration. We can go through the longer list if you want. You know, words like harmonious or complimentary can mean very different things to very, to different people, and certainly are, are subjective in nature. So those kind of standards would not, um, really meet the test of, of either the HAA or SB thirty-five in terms of, um, objectivity. You know, integration well or compatible relationships, you know, respecting topography, minimizing visual impact. Those are all somewhat subjective in nature, and I think are, are, would be of concern to try to keep those in our various findings and, and standards. So, you know, the, the path forward, I would point out one other thing with this whole, you know, objective-subjective, is that what we're talking about is only applicable, the, the, the application of, uh, objective design standards is, is really being governed by state law in, in a couple ways. And it's primarily only related to denying or reducing the density of a residential project. So if you had a project that was subject to, to, you know, these, these requirements, and you wanted to look at subjective design standards, you could still apply them, but you can't use them as a basis to reduce the density or deny the project. So there are issues of, you know, potentially compatibility and whatnot that are a little softer, that you could still look at, but you have to understand if we keep those kind of standards, they're, they're not a basis, legal basis to, to reduce the, the, the yield of a project or deny it.
So what you're saying is, if we want aesthetic to a project-
I'm sorry, is your mic on?
Oh, okay, so what you're saying is, if we wanted to, um, add aesthetics to a project, we can require it as long as we don't, um, reduce, um, require them to reduce the density. So even if it increases their costs, or, you know, if we want additional landscaping or whatnot, they have to do it as long as it-
There, there, there's, I think the other test in that is it's going to eliminate or, uh, the feasibility, make the project infeasible. So I think there's always going to be a sort of a reasonability, a reasonableness sort of cap on that. If you ask somebody, well, you know, we'd like the, the roof plane changed, and so the, the peak is, um, you know, a foot shorter, because we think that would be better. And it doesn't affect the overall sort of square footage, or the ability of them to achieve the density or the yield. You know, that's the kind of change you could probably impose. If you make them sort of dramatically redesign the project or redesign it its entirety, and they don't really know that they're going to meet the same kind of yield, or, um, that would be something that's very different, so. I mean, the, the idea is, I think, try to capture even aesthetic concerns, scale concerns in objective manner, because then everyone's on much safer grounds. I think that would be sort of the preferred approach.
Well, and I would just say, I think we have a, at least in my time here, a, a history of, um, you know, doing study sessions with you guys when we do have larger projects that come through, which provide that opportunity. Obviously, they're not a legally mandated part of the application process, but, um, I think you guys have had a couple of projects where you've seen them early, and early enough to give that kind of broad-based feedback for, um, their designers to work with, so that hopefully when it comes to hearing, you, you have an idea of what you're seeing, you've already given that preliminary feedback.
May I ask about, uh, density? If you had a specific plan, we had a specific plan with Parkside, and you arrived at a certain density, and, and according to SB thirty-five, fifty percent of the units must be affordable. Could you with a specific plan in an area actually deem more than fifty percent and a greater density coinciding? And not be challenged that that was onerous?
You mean, require a higher yield of, or higher percentage?
Yes.
Uh, under, under the plan, no, you'd have no legal right to impose a higher affordability, a deeper affordability requirement that I'm aware of, yeah.
But you could insist on higher density?
Insist, allow for higher density? I'm not sure what you're-
If you had a specific plan where you said the density in this area, we've got some aesthetics as, as you mentioned, but we want a higher density. Or is that just-
I think it's an interesting que, I've never thought of it that way, because I, I would, I would think you still end up with a, an inconsistency with the general plan, right? Because if the general plan, presuming a specific plan is consistent with the general plan, there could be a range, right? If you have a range of density, you could go up to the top of the range, but you can't really exceed the, the general plan, you know, maximum. That wouldn't, I, I can't, other than, you know, maybe density bonus issues, but I'm not seeing that as a, and I'm not sure even what so, what-
Well, if-
How that would solve a problem, or what, what community good would come of that solution.
Let me just use an example. With Parkside, there were ideas originally, certain size units. They were scaled down on a lot of them, which was a higher density to accomplish a number of units. But the end result is, you have smaller units. So sometimes that goes hand in hand with more affordable, just because they are smaller.
Yeah, that's, um, I, I think you'd still have to operate in the, in, within the constraints of the general plan, though. And so if the general plan allows for that, some consideration for these kind of circumstances, that could certainly be done. But yeah, we are, no, nothing in here, I mean, the way these particular regulations, they give an applicant sort of the ability to use the higher of a zoning category or the general plan, but it doesn't say you can blow past the city's general plan for density.
Thank you.
Sure. So really, that was kind of my high-level overview of these particular issues. I'm glad to dive into it more deeply, or if you want to, we can revisit this when you're, some of your peers who aren't here this evening. Certainly opening up the commission for comments, questions, reactions, whatever you have for me.
Just a kind of general observation that, you know, when I, when I see legislative action like this, I mean, it seems like the intent is to, um, remove any local government barriers that would, um, that would keep a developer from building, right? And so it's kind of big state action, all, all the way on down, right? But there's always unintended consequences of these types of legislative actions. And then there's probably policy loopholes that we may not have fully, you know, analyzed and, and understand, right? Uh, so, and this is all very useful information. It helps me kind of understand just where the state is going right now, and, but then, in the, like, in the same breath, I'm like, okay, how is this going to translate with the, um, the, you know, the development activities that are going on in the city, right? How, and, and broader within the county, because I think there's kind of county, how this, how this, how this is interpreted in South San Francisco and our neighboring, you know, cities as well, I think also will have an impact to how the developers look at, at the city of Brisbane, right? So it's, some of this is, is kind of a wait and see, I guess. And it'll be interesting to see what our other commissioner, you know, partners have to say. But I appreciate you putting this together in a digestible format.
I don't know how digestible it is, I mean, certainly there is a, I mean, there is a wait and see component, but, but I think we all have to realize that these are, I think, the, the way our code is written today, there's quite a bit of exposure, frankly, if someone were to, if we were, commission wanted to reduce the density of a project based on, on our current regulatory scheme, you would be very hard pressed, in my opinion, to have the legal tools to do that. And I think part of what we want to give you is the tools to, to do your job and not put you in sort of shackles and confinement of state law. So there has to be some sort of creative thought process involved of how we can come up with objective standards that, that get us maybe not the full latitude we collectively have today, but at least to some high, how much higher level of comfort than we would have if, if we were told, okay, well, these are interesting. You can strike all the findings that are subjective, and we'll, we'll abide by everything else. I don't know that that's, you know, optimal for anybody, certainly not for us, and not for the commission, and not for the community. So we want to- So we want to cure this, you know, this issue. And again, the state is, it is an evolving field, and who knows what the regulations will say next year, and it's kind of part of the, unfortunately, we're always chasing the latest iteration of what they're doing, but I think we have some exposure now that we want to limit and reduce.
Can I just add? I think there are a lot of components of our design review findings right now that we've highlighted as being subjective in nature, that we probably could find analogs or, you know, craft standards that are objective, that really are, you know, when we say, for example, that buildings are maintaining a compatible relationship to adjacent development, I mean, is that talking about additional setbacks? Are we talking about maintaining view corridors on a site? I think Sierra Point Design Guidelines is a good example of how we kind of already have some objective standards, other than the Parkside, for maintaining view corridors through sites to primary views of the bay. So we're not exactly starting from scratch, you know, we've gone through the Parkside process, the Sierra Point Guidelines have some good examples, too. So it's not a, not that it's not a heavy lift necessarily, it'll be a good amount of work, but there's a path forward where we can take what we have now and, I think, translate it into workable and objective standards.
Do you have any idea when you might come back to us with, since this is a draft, some of these changes, when you might come back to us with something else?
Actually, what you have before you, there is no draft language at all. This is all more of a identification of sort of what we consider some of the issues to be addressed, kind of a thought piece. I would think the quickest we could get back here is in the summer. That's my gut.
Do you know of any communities yet dealing with SB thirty-five within the county?
In the county, I'm not aware of any.
I haven't heard of any.
Well, there's some in Santa Clara, there's a Valco project.
Right, you may have heard of that, yeah.
There's, Berkeley has several SB thirty-five projects that have been in process.
Yeah, and, yeah, and so SB thirty-five, obviously being a very distinct process that's developer-invoked, right? And then the Housing Accountability Act applies to any residential project, and so, again, there is two different processes. So SB thirty-five, there have been very few projects, as of yet, throughout the state. And Berkeley has six, well, I don't know successfully, but Berkeley has actually staved off now twice, I think, an SB thirty-five application for the same site, because they've determined it's, the site's not eligible for streamlining, and I think that's being fought out in the courts or will be. So, still very much evolving, not really heavily utilized.
Yeah, again, with projects in Brisbane, you know, we're not convinced, I mean, we haven't seen historically a market, a private development that meets a fifty percent affordability threshold. Not to say it can't be done, but we have not seen that project, so the idea that there's some, that this is a, sort of a successful for-profit development type, I don't know if that's true or not.
Would this only apply to new construction, or could it also be applied to rehabilitation of a building and reconfiguration?
I can't think of buildings in this town that would, if you were going to look at sort of an R-three site or something, you'd probably either want to take what you have and refurbish it, or scrape it, and try to optimize or maximize it. I can't see...
It's often cheaper to just demolish. Any other questions?
I have one, John. So I'm looking at attachment to page H. one, point one-one, where you put in red that you thought was subjective, like criteria regarding detrimental, something that's detrimental to the health, safety, comfort, and general welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood. And I was just curious, why is that deemed subjective?
I think, if we go back to the idea of, you know, I think that language has probably been, in my mind, preempted by some of this, although this is HAA, I think it's also applicable, specific adverse effect. So you're back to sort of a general health, welfare, and safety standard versus things that are significant, quantifiable, direct, and measurable. I think those are two different things. That's just my, again, we haven't really talked to the city attorney about the cures or how things work, but I think that general standard would not, would not necessarily rise to being a specific adverse effect as defined herein.
Can I give maybe an example? So when you guys, for example, saw your first use permit application for a cannabis business, which was, as you recall, off of South Hill Drive, or, sorry, the first one on South Hill Drive, there was some questions brought up of the proximity to schools, which, you know, at that time, the council had deleted the prohibition on proximity to schools, you know, previously, it had been, you have to be a certain square footage away from the school. We had no standards that said you couldn't be located there, so I think there's a lot of discussion there of the potential for odor or other kind of nuisance-related things that weren't defined as nuisances in our code. There wasn't any standard that you could point to that says, as you can see here, we've identified cannabis businesses as undesirable in this certain location or to this sensitive group. So that's just maybe an example of a difficult finding to make that subjective without any reference to an adopted standard.
Yeah, it might be, the issue may not be to try to cure the use permit findings, but whether or not residential projects in areas that are zoned residentially should be subject to use permit or just design permit. I think there's a, there's a lot of different ways of, because I think the more traditional health, safety, welfare standards are something you want to be able to have some latitude and flexibility in, in commercial and non-residential uses, where you could get into these sort of squishier nuisance issues and not having to be drawing hard and fast quantitative lines. So instead of trying to create two separate, instead of use permit findings, one for residential and one for non-residential, question is, is the use permit the right tool for residential, or should, is it really all, can just be embedded into the design sort of side and not the use side? Because to me, a use permit, when you have a residential zone and residential uses, I'm not, that's some of the logic of why you would need a use permit, I'm not sure. As Julia pointed out, we already eliminated that requirement for condominiums, because again, just moved it all under the design side of aspect, not a, not a use permit. There's other ways of fixing, you know, this particular problem without throwing out the whole ordinance and its more, you know, its applicability to other sort of non-residential uses and purposes.
Thank you. Could I ask you a question on the cover sheet, H. one point one, under city ordinances near the bottom? In the second sentence, it says, "In addition to these objective standards, single-family residences along identified ridge lines." Could you elaborate what you're referencing there?
Well, if you go to the zoning ordinance itself, there are some maps that, when they updated the zoning ordinance some number of years ago, or we did that, we identified ridge lines that would be subject to these particular provisions for protection in the ordinance.
Thank you. Anyone else? So if the rest of the commissioners would agree, I'd like to see this continued if we have time to our next meeting, so we have two other commissioners, and it gives us an opportunity to think of, maybe we'll find some more questions to dive into with this. And thank you for all your time preparing this. Appreciate that. Do we have more workshops that are going to be further down the road, not to pile more onto your workload?
Yes, we do.
Because they're very helpful.
I don't remember what they are at the moment, but we do have a couple.
Not related to the HAA or SB thirty-five?
Right, yeah.
Yes, we do. We'll have at least a couple in March and April.
Okay, thank you. Okay, items initiated by staff?
Oh, the council did last week approve, oh, they did two things. One was, you had seen the general plan amendment to integrate the local hazard mitigation plan, LHMP?
Yes.
That amendment was approved, and then the council also discussed short-term rentals, and they decided to refer it back to your commission with some guidance in terms of, I think the general guidance was to allow them under certain conditions and restrictions and time and place and regulatory aspects. And we'll be coming back with you to discuss, you know, that ordinance, probably in a workshop format, I think, as well.
You mean, a workshop prior to public hearings?
Yes.
Okay. And is that something we would anticipate coming soon?
Probably May. May or June. And if you guys remember, well, some of you were not on the commission yet, none of you were on the commission yet, there were quite a few workshops in 2015. I think we would anticipate trying to get as much public participation as we can in the second go-round. So one workshop or multiple is more likely.
That was it, I think, for us.
Items initiated by the commission, anyone? Do we have anything yet on the subcommittee with OSEC on trees?
Yes, actually, so the subcommittee met last week, and we will be bringing forward an ordinance to be recommended to the city council. But you'll see that, it's actually with the city attorney right now in review, but I intend to have that on your next agenda as just an informational item.
Thank you. All right, at this point, take a motion for adjournment. Our next meeting is Thursday, February twenty-eighth, 2019, at seven-thirty.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good night.